Good evening, everyone, and welcome. I'd like to call the September 12, 2023 Planning Commission regular meeting to order. The Planning Commission is holding hybrid meetings. Members of the public can attend the meeting in person or observe the meeting on Zoom online by visiting www.cityofarcada.org and following the live meetings link at the bottom of the city's homepage, or on the city's YouTube channel. If you are attending remotely, please be aware that the Zoom feed provides the closest to real-time stream. If you rely on the other feeds and you wish to make comments, please be aware of the time lag on those feeds. The first item on our agenda is the land acknowledgement. The City of Arcata acknowledges that the lands we are located on are the unceded ancestral lands of the Wiat tribe. The land that Arcata rests on is known in the Wiat language as "gudene," meaning "over in the woods" or "among the redwoods." Past actions by local, state, and federal governments removed the Wiat and other indigenous peoples from the land and threatened to destroy their cultural practices. The City of Arcata acknowledges the Wiat community, their elders both past and present, as well as future generations. This acknowledgement seeks to aid in dismantling the legacy narratives of settler colonialism. Next is roll call. Staff, will you please call roll?
Yeah, Commissioner Strickland.
Present.
Commissioner Simmons.
Here.
Commissioner Mayor.
Here.
Commissioner Yodowitz.
Here.
Commissioner Lehman.
Here.
Vice Chair Tagney.
Here.
And Chair Davies.
Here. We are joined this evening by Community Development Department Staff Director David Loyah. Next, we will have public comment. During this time, people may make comments about items that are not on the agenda. If you wish to speak to one of our agenda items, you will have an opportunity when we are discussing those items. If you have comments about items that are not listed on our agenda today, please line up now behind the lectern. In the interest of fairness to all commenters, if you begin talking about items that are on the agenda, I will gently interrupt you and direct you to share those comments during the appropriate agenda item. If you are on Zoom and you wish to make oral communications on matters that are not on today's agenda, please raise your hand by selecting the raise hand icon on the right side of your screen, or by pressing star nine if you are calling in. For those on Zoom, when it is your turn to speak, the clerk will unmute you. With that, I'd like to open public comment. Each speaker will have three minutes to comment during early oral communications. Feel free to state your name for the record. May we have the first speaker, please?
Good evening. I'm getting used to this new microphone on the podium. Hopefully, I can hear myself and everybody can hear me. My name is Joanne McGary. I come here very often because I care about what's happening in our town, Arcata. I've been a resident here off and on for 11 years, in Humboldt County for 11 years. I came from Santa Barbara for seven years and five major fires, and lived in San Francisco in the Bay Area for 25 years. Grew up in LA. I'm a California person. I've seen a lot of planning communities. I went to school at UC Davis, which is, in my opinion, a great example of innovation, at least in the time I was there. Subsequent decades, I don't know, but in the 70s, UC Davis and the City of Davis were exemplar in trying to do innovative things in their town. And I think there's some leftover examples of that, such as their green belts and such. But what I'm coming here tonight for is because I've chosen to not drive a car for the summer, and I might continue that for a few more months. And it's been eye-opening, enlightening, discouraging, upsetting, dangerous. Good exercise. I've lost weight. I've seen a lot that you cannot see when you do not get out of a car very often. So I highly recommend that all of you on the Planning Commission make a commitment to try and... I know that many of you do walk. I've seen many of you in the marsh and other places, but make a point maybe of walking around, trying to notice things that you may not have noticed before, because this town has great potential, and I want it to meet that potential in a really grounded, organic, wholesome, wholesome way. I don't like patchworking and dealing with things kind of disjointed. And so, one of the things I'm really concerned about now that I have 28 seconds left is being prepared in so many ways, and I don't know what the Planning Commission's role is in all of this, but are we prepared for the extreme weather this winter, for the homeless and vulnerable? And are we prepared for earthquakes and other disasters? I don't think we are, and I think we need to plan for that.
Thanks, Joanne.
2:54, is that... No, it's supposed to... So we're getting one minute extra here, okay. All right, I just walked in. There was some news this last week that was pretty tragic of how Cal State, Cal Poly student was hit by a car, pretty severe, where they had been taken down to Santa Rosa in intensive care, where they had four, I think, surgeries to relieve the pressure on their brain from blood. This is an issue that I've been talking about quite a while. It at least goes back to even the goal setting that was the beginning of the year, but before that, exactly how's the city addressing all these incidents? This isn't the first one, you know, we had, I guess the most symbolic one was with the mother pushing her carriage and who was killed tragically in the crosswalk. So, you know, I went to the police on that, and along with also sort of like the problem with the vehicles with the noise, too, that, you know, are adjusting their cars to whatever. So, the fact is that nothing is being done about any of these things. In fact, you know, I even talked to some of these people that are the speeders and also the noise, and brought it up and did it in a way that, you know, wasn't attacking. So they were a little responsive. They're not worried that the police are going to do anything, and I'm agreeing with that, that the police are not doing anything about any of these incidents. So, this is like a fundamental thing that, you know, all cities need to be, you know, taken care of, because it's just the basics of public safety. And I know that the council did hear a little bit about this, because their idea was to lower the speed limit 10 miles an hour, which I think is, I'll just plainly say it's not going to work from, because all you're going to do is the people that are behaving and looking out for others are going to drop their speed 10 miles an hour, and the others that are not, that are driving whatever they want to do and do whatever they do, are going to continue to do that. So, I mean, this also ties into a year and a half of environmental justice and local planning. I mean, if you can't even do the fundamentals of these issues, you know, it's hard to expand on the things that I've listed in the emails many a times to you. So, I'm just throwing this back at, like, what is being done? You know, and I started out with this exercise by going to the police in 2022 in January, and they basically said everything you said here is true. Go to the council, go to the leadership, and that's exactly what I did. I did everything I was supposed to do, and really, what I've heard lately, why I just didn't go to the state with this, is because we were hiring more police, and I haven't really noticed, I've noticed, I guess, more police, but I haven't noticed any change in behaviors from the standpoint of stopping vehicles that are doing all these obviously bad things and actually killing people in town. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Good evening. I'm Fred Wise with arcataone.com. First, thank you for the opportunity to speak for three minutes. There's only three speakers, so that works well. I'm not always clear what is on the agenda and what is not, but I'll count on you to guide me. I want to make sure that you, it's clear to you that I'm not here to tell you how to do your job. I'm here as a reminder of the work which is ahead of you. There's still a lot of work. The Gateway Commons, I'll put with the business item. The Urban Fields Studio Report and Presentation I consider to be bogus. Essentially, they said, here are some taller buildings, but it's not feasible to build them. I'd like to see some feasibility on come out of any report. The $118,000 Formas Code Amendment includes a proposed massing image. That was eight months ago. I'd like to see that image. It was paid for, I think. For those of you, the commissioners who have been here for a while, you remember the Concerns and Solutions Table? You spent three sessions working on this. It had a column on the right side that asked for planning experts to come in, talk to the Planning Commission. That column was removed. I'd like to see that column come back. The 3D visualization page in the current Gateway Area Draft was removed after a year and a half of being there. I'd like to see those 3D visualizations, as was included in the draft for a long time. The images for the step backs were moved to the fourth story as per your recommendations, but they're shown in that draft as being about 22 feet deep. The reality, as you know, is that they're eight feet deep. I'd like to see those drawings corrected. In terms of new articles on arcataone.com, I've been doing some investigation into how other cities handle inclusionary zoning. Santa Cruz has had 20% for years. There's recently a proposal to increase it, which the City Council, the Planning Commission recommended, the City Council denied. I have a recent article on solar shading with three 35-second videos of the sun going across the Gateway Area. My issue with tall buildings is not an isolated tall building, but if there's a cluster of tall buildings or buildings across the street from each other, it changes the solar shading entirely. I was surprised to find that a six-story building on the AmeriGas site will actually reach the plaza at certain times of the year in shade and cover the co-op parking lot. There's an article on the myth of privately owned, public-accessible, open spaces. I don't think developers are going to go for that at all. And I'm putting the reading time on the article, so you have an idea of whether it's two, three, four, five, 10 minutes to read, make it easier for you. Thanks very much.
Thanks for your comments, Fred. David, commenters online?
Well, we have several members online, but no comments at this point.
All right. Given that, I'd like to thank everyone here for your comments. Appreciate that, as always. Appreciate your participation and input. And we will now move on to the next item on our agenda, which is the Consent Calendar. All members, all items, rather, on the consent calendar are considered to be routine by the commission and are enacted in one motion. Commissioners or members of the public can request that an item be removed for separate discussion. The only item on our consent calendar this evening is Item A, Approve Planning Commission Minutes from our Regular Meeting of July 11, 2023. Do any Planning Commissioners wish to pull this consent item? If not, is there a motion to approve the consent calendar?
A move that we approve the consent calendar.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. We have no public hearings this evening, so we will move on to our business items. We have one business item this evening, which is basically to consider additional general plan update recommendations. That's broad. So specifically, there's a couple specific pieces we want to go through, staff will prep us for, but I really want to hear from all of the rest of you about your feedback from our joint study session that we had with the City Council. I got to speak a lot throughout that meeting, so I'd really like to hear input from the rest of you, not only on what your sort of perspective was on how that meeting went, but also any ideas you might have about how our upcoming joint study session with the City Council might be more effective, if you think it might need to be. So, David, can we begin with a brief staff report?
Sure, yeah, and I'll keep it very brief. To the two pieces, I, you know, point out in the staff report that the study session debrief has a fairly short section, and then there's a lot on the commercial land use designations. That doesn't reflect the importance of these discussions, in my mind. I do want to reserve some time to talk about the commercial land use designations and make sure that we, you know, spend, you know, a good 20, 30 minutes focusing on that and get a recommendation on that. But we wanted to, as the chair pointed out, provide opportunity to talk about, you know, what is planned for the upcoming study session and get some feedback from the Planning Commission. I wanted to break the discussion into two parts. One is more around form and function, and the other is a little bit more about, you know, the substance of the meeting. So, you know, starting with the first, you know, I'll tell you that we've been thinking, you know, at staff level, and in addition with the mayor, and the chair has been involved in these conversations as well, about, you know, how to structure the meeting so that there's more of a conversation going on. Typically, our study sessions are held around the table. We pull these two tables together, and everyone from the Planning Commission, the City Council sits around that table, and it's more conducive to a conversation. I think we tried to structure the meeting with this more, you know, structured format for the last meeting to ensure that everyone could be mic'd and, you know, viewed on the video, and so on and so forth. And I think we really, I think everybody is sort of recognizing that we missed an opportunity to facilitate conversation. So, you know, one of the decisions that the mayor has made is to have the study session format where we're all sitting around the table. There's an example of, you know, some, you know, form and, you know, to an extent, the function that we're thinking about changing to make these conversations more effective. So, just wanted to open it up, you know, you can, if you want to, you know, spend some time reflecting on your impressions of how the last meeting went, in order to leverage us into hopefully some recommendations for how to improve communication at the next one. And I'd be happy to answer any questions about, you know, what that might look like, but I think the, we all probably have the same goal for getting to, you know, good recommendations for improvements.
May I ask a background question?
Go ahead, Dan.
Just for a point of clarity, we've had two recusals from the City Council, which leaves us with three. I'd like you to explain to the whole commission what that means in terms of general plan updates, in terms of the voting body of three City Council members.
Sure. Yeah, absolutely. So, general plan updates require a majority of the body. Different decisions that the various bodies, whether the Planning Commission or City Council make, require different thresholds for vote. Most votes are just a simple majority of the then-voting members, and so, you can, with a body of seven, you can start a meeting with four members. You have to have a quorum, so you can start a meeting with four members. And generally speaking, decisions that you make will require a majority of those four members to, you know, to pass a motion. With the City Council, there's five members, so a quorum for them is three. That's a majority of the membership. And with the general plan decisions, you have to actually have a majority of the body, not a majority of the then-voting members, to pass it. So, this decision on the Gateway Area Plan, the decision on the general plan updates, you know, broadly, require a unanimous vote with the current composition of the voting members. I did want to add in that, you know, and I know that, you know, this has been in the news, and different people feel differently about this, but I wanted to add in that with the two members, you know, Alex Stillman and Stacy Akon Salazar, who are recusing from these decisions at this point, that was based on a, you know, a letter that they received from the FPPC, based on the information that we, as the city, gave the FPPC at the time. In those letters, within the first paragraph, in fact, I think it's like the third or fourth sentence, it says, you know, "This advice we're giving you is based on the information that we have at this time, that you've provided to us. If things change, or if there's additional information you want us to consider, you know, please feel free to write back." So, when the City Council is bringing on the new legal team that we're bringing on, we awarded a contract on the sixth, our new city attorney started on the seventh. One of the first things that they're doing is an audit of our practices, and so they're evaluating every procedure, process, policy that we have for these procedures that they can, and that includes decisions that have been made around these recusals. So I just, I wanted to have that as part of this conversation as well, just to front-load that, if there are any questions about that. But if they are, in fact, after that additional analysis, if we, you know, stick with the idea that there's potential conflict, and they are required to recuse both of them, then it would require the three remaining council members to vote affirmatively to pass any general plan element.
Which is why they kept referring to getting consensus rather than voting up or down. If it was two to one, it was two to one. In this case, they needed consensus on anything to move forward.
Yeah, and I think that, you know, there really is a desire. I mean, you recall, as we were going through the process, there's really a desire to try and get consensus. Part of the reason for bringing the gradients of agreement as part of that consensus-building process is to really vet out, like, you know, do I have concerns significant enough that I would block this vote if I had the opportunity? And you can put yourself on that spectrum. This body recognizing that you wanted to try and gain consensus, even if that consensus was on some items maybe a little bit, you know, begrudging, that you built that consensus. And I think the City Council wants to do that same thing, is to build consensus for its decisions. And in this case, they don't have the luxury of saying, luxury, if you will, maybe that's the wrong word, but they don't have the option of saying, "We're just going to take the majority two-one vote." That's just not an option. They have to get a unanimous vote of three for these decisions. And then, you know, possible outcomes for FPPC advice may be that one, and not both, of the current council members is no longer conflicted based on the information, or if two are no longer conflicted based on that information, then you would add those votes to that voting body, potentially.
Do you know when we'll have information on that decision?
I don't have a timeline for that decision, but I know it's, that the lawyers are definitely taking a look at that.
Excuse me, the Zoom is not working. And state law says that you can't conduct a meeting.
It's available to the public.
Sounds like something for Dylan to address. Thank you.
See if you can work on that.
Well, I'm sure they're working on it.
There's no video or audio. Thanks.
Okay. Do you want to take like a five-minute break?
Sure, let's do that. Back in five.
So, let's see, before you cut us off, Dylan, I'll just let folks out there in the video world know that I'm going to reboot Zoom, and hopefully that corrects the issue.
If we're back, let's carry on, carry on, carry on. How now, brown cow? Okay.
Okay.
Is this ready, sir?
Yeah, go for it. Okay, so, we're back.
So, we're back. Welcome back. After a brief break, we're back. So, where we left off was, just to summarize quickly, that the City Council, as configured, currently needs all three votes unanimously to move the general plan forward. Did you get that sufficiently answered, Dan?
Yeah, I just wanted us to all hear it and be on the same page about that.
Super appreciate that, as that's very relevant to the course of how that meeting that we're going to discuss unfolded. Judith?
Yeah, thank you very much. How now, brown cow? Are we very good?
You're good. We can hear you.
Okay. Yeah, first, thanks very much for that explanation. I was going to be asking the same thing. I wanted to ask one further question on that, and then, I guess, a little bit of feedback. So, the three out of three would be for the gateway portion of the general plan, but would it necessarily be for the general plan as a whole as well?
That's a really good point. The three out of three is only for the gateway plan decision because there are recusals. I don't know that there are conflicts. I haven't heard of any conflicts for any of the other plans. It still would require three, but obviously, that's a majority anyway. So, at a minimum, three votes for any general plan element.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, comments. First, thank you very much for considering the roundtable format for the next study session. I know only a couple of us were here back when we used to do those study sessions that way. They were very effective at raising issues that might not be raised otherwise, and at fostering open discussion. Furthermore, I think that if we call this a study session, then adopting the expedited process that the Planning Commission has been using the last few months, as we did in our session last time, it actually kind of squelches discussion, and it squelches the opportunity to acknowledge and address linkages between various policy areas if we're feeling rushed to have a vote on one very specific and limited item. That format also really, other than Scott, for which we thank you, really cut out the rest of the Planning Commission. We might as well not have been here, with the exception of a couple of commissioners who were haranguing one council member over one issue, where she was thinking out loud in the way that traditionally we do in study sessions. It was basically a council task force meeting. And so, again, I think of a more traditional study session format would be a really good idea, and I would appreciate it if the council does not use that to cast their straw votes on these issues. That's something that they could actually create a task force for. But that doesn't feel like an appropriate use of a study session with all of us present. So, yes, thank you very much if that's the suggestion of returning to a more traditional study session format. That would be great. Public comment is really important in those sessions, as is the recording. A couple of us had suggested that public comment take place after staff, council members, and planning commissioners begin their discussion, rather than throwing it all at us at the beginning. And I would still stand by that recommendation. I like the idea that the public has a role in a study session, but it helps for them to be able to react to sort of the full agenda that we're going to address, rather than turning it into theater and circus.
Thanks, Judith. Go ahead, Peter.
This is my personal opinion, but I thought calling it a study session was a misnomer. I came, I'm new. I came with the impression that we would discuss topics and understand each other's position, but I felt at least that the City Council came with their minds made up, and they didn't really listen to what the Planning Commission had thought out and said. And, I mean, they had political objectives and pretty set-in-stone ideas about how they were going to vote on certain things. So, I didn't think it was a study session, and I'm not quite sure how to make it one. Maybe sitting around a table would be better, but I didn't. I mean, we got the opinions of the City Council the day of the meeting, or the day before the meeting, I don't remember, where they published what they thought. And it's like, well, you already think this. Why are we having a study session?
So, can I just parlay that into what I think I heard Commissioner Mayor say, that what she defined as the expedited process didn't work. And so, the Planning Commission had this, the process that it used to try and come to decisions quickly to get through a large volume of material. And I'm kind of hearing at least two of you say that process doesn't really work for this format.
Yeah. Well, I just wanted to add one thing that we didn't discuss in our plans for the next meeting. I think, I don't know, but I think everyone agrees that sitting at a table together is just going to foster a level of connection we didn't have. So, that's solid. But the meeting is also, the next meeting is going to be facilitated by Heather Equinos, and I think her facilitation of the meeting will smooth out some of the communication challenges that were present in the last meeting. Go ahead, Matt.
Yeah, I just want to speak in favor of having the City Council members write out their positions prior to the meeting. I think it... Okay, I'm going to talk into this wall, and everyone, that's okay. I want to speak in favor of having City Council members write out their positions prior to the meeting. I think it's incredibly useful to know the position that people are leaning towards prior to a meeting. I think it saves time. I think it gives us a better sense of the potential outcome, and where we need to focus on where there's disagreement and where there's agreement. And I think, in that meeting, we only got it a day before, which is unfortunate, but I knew, based on what they had written, kind of how they were probably going to vote on each item. The unfortunate thing is that some members of the, some member of the City Council wanted to take the plan in a completely different direction than we had been planning for several years, right? I mean, all the way back in 2019, we said in our housing element that we would be increasing the density in the Gateway Area Plan in order to meet the housing needs that our city has. And so to have someone say that they were leaning towards doing the opposite of that in their meeting notes was unfortunate and deeply frustrating. But I am glad they did, because it got us to that discussion, instead of talking around the problem.
Joel?
Yeah, I was literally rendered speechless at the meeting at the study session, and I was, I guess, because of the way the format was handled, and the way one council member seemed to take over the meeting. I do want to disagree strongly with Judith's characterization of comments of some of the other commissioners as being haranguing. I certainly did not feel that anybody was harangued at that meeting. I think if somebody takes a position, they can be questioned, and to characterize it as being harangued is inaccurate. I do agree with Matt, that it was helpful to me to have the City Council members' statements written out ahead of time, so I knew where they were coming from. I wasn't quite prepared for where one council member was coming from. And I think it's also helpful, one thing that surprised me is it seemed that at least one council member was taking political positions, and our codes in the general plan have to have a rational basis. They have to be based in facts. And if there's some way to have some data, have some facts, rather than just opinions being expressed, I think that would be helpful. I don't know how you kind of fold that into the study session, but I think it's important that we know what the facts are, so the City Council can make its decision based on the facts.
Can I ask?
Go ahead, Dan.
Yeah. In terms of process, reflecting back a year and a half, two years, to a study session with the City Council, there was a point at which they acknowledged to the commission that they weren't going to be able to spend the amount of time that we were on the Gateway Project, and how complicated it all was. And we've spent dozens of meetings doing nothing but that while they've handled other city matters. And in their acknowledgement, I felt like I heard them say, "Go for it. Study this, and give us a recommendation. We look forward to hearing from you." So, I was a little surprised in the study session, which, as I am agreeing with other comments, that didn't feel much like a give-and-take study session. I was surprised at how little anything that we had concluded, passed, as a group, whether it was consensus, or at least a majority, over all of this process, was disregarded. And I don't know how to catch that back. Like, this is, they're elected officials, their vote overrides ours. So, maybe we just at that previous study session, I don't know if it was a year and a half or two years ago, had kind of a gentleman's, gentleperson's agreement, or what. But I'm just a little surprised at the state of where we're at right now. Feeling like hundreds of hours, dozens and dozens of meetings is almost for naught, because if it takes consensus from three City Council people, it quite simply felt like one could diminish the gateway to the point where there isn't a gateway. It's kind of a walk away. Like, sorry, you can't say you're for the gateway and take all those elements away to the point where it doesn't work. This is a very complicated puzzle of give-and-takes from the community, from builders, from solar shading, all kinds of things, streetscapes, landscapes. And to start undermining it, it suddenly, and it's a very complicated puzzle that we've all been deeply enmeshed in. It works together. It doesn't work when you start pulling it apart. So, feeling like that we've spent these hundreds and hundreds of hours together, and the City Council has now just come in for this brief study session with some very dominant opinions that could scuttle the process is hard for me. The other thing I want to just say about process is that there was a point in that study session that one of the commissioners was almost reprimanded by a City Council person, saying, "Wait a minute. I thought this was our time." And I, boy, that sure didn't sound like study session to me. It sounded like, "Oh, okay, we'll be quiet. You guys go ahead." So, I know we're all on that same page, and I'd like to know that we come out of tonight with a better path.
I'd like to have a, thank you, Dan. Abby, I'd like to give you a chance to weigh in, hear what you had to say.
I want to express my gratitude to all of the members of the public who not only came in and sat on Zoom to not be able to speak, which is kind of disheartening, but everyone who showed up in chambers and spoke, or sent us emails. That's why we need those folks, so that we can make informed decisions. And so, I just want them to know that we feel their passion, and it's awesome, and to keep it up. And then, also, like Commissioner Tangier was saying, when there was discussion about reducing building height below four stories, I was disheartened, and I agree that it undermined all the work that has been done on the Gateway Plan to date. So, I know that there were requests from council members to have additional information provided to them, to hopefully make them feel more secure in their decisions about setbacks, step backs, and building height. So, I hope we can provide that information to them. But I'll also agree that after witnessing the interaction, maybe it was the fact that the diocese is the diocese, and then we have commissioners sitting at a table that's lower. I took conflict resolution. I know that seating arrangements actually mean a lot. I also don't feel like it should be a situation of a rebuttal. They shouldn't feel the need to rebuttal to something a commissioner said. We have been, you all, I just recently have been becoming familiar with the Gateway Plan, and we should all be respected in our opinions. And so, I look forward, and I'm very supportive of the roundtable idea. And then, lastly, I will say that it is helpful to know where they're coming from before we have a joint study session. It was helpful to know that the K and L couplet wasn't supported, so we can stop spending commission time discussing a couplet that isn't supported by the community. And I hope that we can continue to have discussions on the improvements for K Street and the L Street Linear Park, or whatever it may come to be, because K Street really sucks. So, that's my comments, and I'll leave it there.
Okay, thank you. I do appreciate everyone's input. A lot to agree on from me there. I know we're all of the same mind that sitting at a table together, as you said, seating does matter, and I think that's going to organically foster a lot more of the kind of back and forth in a more traditional study session format that Judith referred to. I'm confident that that will change the dynamic in a positive way. I agree that the meeting could have been more productive. I don't think that it was just due to the fact that we were using the format that we've used at the Planning Commission. I think the problem was that we didn't actually stick to that format, that we were, speakers were allowed to go off-topic, and things, I think things, that was, that meeting was an example of why that meeting style that we've adopted at the Planning Commission is more effective. And I think having Heather here as a neutral party to help keep us on track and accountable in our conversation will be effective. I think it's fair, certainly, for the City Council to make their own decisions that don't align with the recommendations that we made. I think that that's fine, and that that's part of the public process. We did not follow all of the recommendations that committees made to us. I don't see anything problematic there. I think the thing that was surprising, and that needs to be teased apart, is that if the City Council wants to go in a different direction when it comes to an issue like addressing how K Street could be safer, I think that that's fine. And that is an example of how they're hearing from people and making different decisions after considering the decisions that we made, the recommendations that we made. I think, though, it's very different for anyone on the City Council to make a suggestion that essentially guts the concept of infill. the concept of infill, which is what the, not a component of the gateway, but it's the core piece of solving the housing crisis that we're in now. For me personally, it has been many years that the community has voiced a desire to do infill versus sprawl. And to hear the city council discussing not only wanting to perhaps tweak or go in a different direction with components of the plan, but actually move us in the other direction and reduce our ability to address the housing crisis, I think is troubling from the standpoint of the work that I've been driving the Planning Commission to do, including as many meetings as three meetings in five days to meet the timeline from the city council. I feel honestly, not only appreciative, but a little protective of the effort that all of you have put in to get us to this point. So I feel a little hesitant to continue slogging through the bike rack and doing some of the other work that we were focused on until we get a little bit of a clearer idea of whether or not the city council, given the fact that we discussed this evening that they have to be unanimous, is in fact intending to move forward with the central concept of high-density infill before we do too much more work on this project. So anyways, go ahead, Matt.
... city back in 2019, when we did our housing element and we said, "This is how we will meet our housing demand." We specifically pointed to the gateway area and said, "We're going to do," back then it was a specific plan, "we're going to do a specific plan there in order to meet our demand." And so the idea, like you're saying, of going backwards and downzoning, which I'm not even convinced you actually could legally do anyway, because in 2018, California passed a law limiting cities' ability to downzone and reduce, you know, residential density because of the housing crisis. I just, we need to know that we're actually still doing a gateway plan.
Go ahead, Peter.
How are we going to move forward and fix this? Because as all of you have said, we have spent, and I haven't been here for the whole time, but we've spent an inordinate amount of time and thought coming up with these recommendations, and they were suddenly out the window. How can we, how do we move forward? How do we convince the city council that the thoughtful deliberation that we've made is worth their while to at least consider directly, if not adopt?
Go ahead, Joel.
I lost sleep the week, the night of that last study session and the week after that. Because while I thought everybody acknowledged we have a housing crisis, that one council member's comments seemed to ignore that. And I thought to myself, how, how, how do you change somebody's mind? And during the study session, there were certain attempts, I think, made to have, to air out some of these issues and to get to the bottom so we could, so the city council could understand what was going on. And it seemed to fall on deaf ears. And then I thought, okay, as I made, as I said in my prior comments, I think facts are important. So I just Googled "housing supply" after, after the meeting. And I came across a report, and I hope the city council can get this information. And this report was done by Congressional Research Service, which is some governmental body in Washington DC that advises Congress and does impartial research. And they did a study on housing. And these are, the report is rife, it's 20 pages, tons of facts, tons of facts. And I'm not going to go through it all here, but this is what they said. Apart from slowing construction, regulation, i.e. zoning rules, general plans, directly impacts supply. Certain zoning restrictions such as family, single-family zoning requirements, minimum lot sizes, and parking requirements, among others, affect how much land can be built on and how many housing units can be built on that land. Another factor that can further exacerbate these issues is existing residents' opposition to new developments near or in their own neighborhoods. Requirements for community hearings or input, therefore, may slow or halt construction projects. Additionally, community opposition to regulatory changes that would reduce costs, such as zoning reform, could perpetuate existing challenges. And by the way, this report was in July of this year. Official government data on the cost of regulation on the construction or renovation of housing do not exist. Some private groups, however, have done such analyses. According to a 2021 study by the National Association of Home Builders, regulations accounted for 23.8% of the average sales price of a new single-family home in 2021. And on a dollar basis, that's $93,870. That's on a nation, you know, national basis, so presumably California is going to be higher than that. I mean, so the facts are that it's not just us saying this stuff. Here's independent research that basically provides this, you know, the background, which I think can apply in a smaller scale here in Arcata, that we need the gateway plan. We need to increase density. We need to promote housing. And just for the record, I just want to give the citation for Fred and others who may want to review this report. The link is https://crsreports.congress.gov/r47617.
Dan, Commissioner Yodowitz, I did mention to you when you forwarded that to me that we would post that on our page, and I just looked, and it's not currently on there. I think I dropped the ball getting that information to our admin, so I'll get that done this week. So you'll be able to go to our landing page for the strategic infill redevelopment program, and it'll be just below this block of links here. You'll see, see it down there.
Yeah, I just wanted to thank you for that, David, and thank you, Joel. Peter, I wanted to respond to your question, which is, where do we go from here? I think that that's, that's, that is a very important question and something that I would like us to speak to this evening. And I think the answer is, I'd like to hear everyone's take on this, but from my perspective, the way forward is that we have, in our next study session, a more productive back and forth between individual Planning Commission members and all of the city council. And I would task all of you with being prepared to describe why it is that you came to the recommendations that you've made and which ones that you think are most important for the housing production effort to survive. And so before I turn it back over to hear your suggestions, I'd also like to say that I think, you know, the city council was all elected, and we've all been appointed by the city council. And as a result, we owe it to the public not to agree with each other. Reasonable people can disagree, but all of us, especially the city council and Planning Commission members, if we state a position, we owe it to the public to be able to explain coherently why the components of what we're deciding and proposing make sense and how those things work. And holding us to that level of accountability, or the Planning Commission to that, the Planning Commission as well as the city council to that level of accountability, is just really democracy. And I don't think we can get forward unless we're all accountable and can be coherent in describing why we're for the things that we're saying we're for. So, go ahead, Peter.
Here's my suggestion. It seems to me there's accord here among all of us that a lot of the rationale and the thought that's gone into the Gateway Plan has been, was somewhat ignored in that meeting. My suggestion is, can we write a letter to the city council as the Planning Commission and tell them what we've just said here? And, you know, make it clear in black and white why we feel so strongly and why we didn't feel heard.
I mean, I'm going to trust that the city council is going to watch our Planning Commission meeting. I'm going to just trust that they watch our proceedings here, and then they will hear us speaking to them in this meeting. But also, let's come prepared to talk about why we reached our decisions and which components are most important. Judith?
Yeah. My understanding is that the city council members are actually watching these meetings or at least watching them to the extent that they feel that they understand what we're doing here. I also feel that the information that, that we are acting on may actually be different than the political considerations that they're acting on. For example, dropping the KL couplet is something that a majority of us voted on. It was not unanimous. And the council was looking at some serious opposition from members of the community, and they reacted to that. And I appreciated that, frankly. I think one of the things that we can do that will actually improve council's ability to hear us and our ability to hear each other would be to use a study session as a study session. Do not use it to take straw votes on pieces of a plan, in some cases out of context. Do not use it to escalate hard positions. I appreciated reading the council members' very brief summaries of their positions on three issues, only one of which they really ended up discussing in depth. But I don't think it's necessary for a study session. We can actually discuss here whether we would appreciate that in the future. Also, one thing I'm confused about with the next, next study session, I thought we were having two gateway study sessions and one study session on the rest of the general plan, at least, which would mean that the next study session would presumably again just be three council members. Is that correct?
Yeah, that is correct. The, the next study session will focus on some of the items from the first study session to get into a little bit more depth on those. And then the remainder of that will be focusing on sort of what the council feels are the highest priority topics for the Gateway Code component. And I do, I feel like we're, I know that there's a little bit more to discuss, but as sort of like the outside observer of your conversation, I've been kind of tracking a few points. I think it would be helpful before transitioning into sort of the next piece of this conversation to summarize the themes that I think I'm hearing and to see if we have, you know, consensus on that. Because the council is watching for sure, but I also think that in these ranging discussions, you know, the, you know, different people pick up on different threads. So if we could just synthesize that before moving on, I'd like an opportunity to do that.
There was something else that I was going to mention in the context of what are we talking about at which of these study sessions. One of the things that has been coming out of our discussions, which I think would be important to bring up with the council, are some of the aspects of the Gateway Plan and the regulatory policies associated with that, that we feel are actually larger than the gateway. A lot of these things are things that, yeah, would be nice with the gateway, but actually we should be doing that citywide. And I'd like to come to the council at our third session, perhaps based on stuff that we do at our second session, with a set of those types of proposals. And that's sort of a good segue from the gateway to the broader plan. I'm also not sure how much sense it makes to have that three-person study session with the council, if they're going to be doing straw votes before we know how many people are actually going to be voting on those issues. And so I would really, really strongly discourage a study session with council straw votes as part of them. I think that aggravated some of the miscommunications that are lasting because of that sense of pressure to straw vote something.
I think if, I think now is a good time to try and synthesize our discussion thus far. Dan?
Yeah, briefly. In this next study session, are there themes that we're tackling, Form-Based Code and something else? Is that right?
Yeah, I don't think that the topics are 100% decided on at this point, but I think that was one of the, you know, going into the second paragraph or so of this staff report, one of the things that I wanted to hear from the Planning Commission, are there topics that are, you know, that you feel like are most important? We can convey that to the mayor while they're thinking about setting the agenda. They can reflect on those, those topics. So I think that's a good, you know, point to consider. And then also, sort of similarly, or similar, on a similar vein, you know, what are the things that are these most important topics? There are certainly, you know, in terms of what your, where your recommendation came down, you know, certainly there are certain, you know, aspects, you know, what floor step backs start on? Do step backs, you know, should we require step backs at all? Like, those, those may be less important to the commission, whereas, you know, it sounds like, you know, density, high-density, you know, building height, those are more important. And so when making a recommendation on, you know, 700 pages worth of documentation or in the Gateway Code, at least, you know, a couple hundred pages, what are the nuggets that you really want to hone in on? So I think those two discussion points kind of related should, should happen in this meeting if we, if we can get there. Does that kind of answer it? And I'm sorry, I don't have more detail, but I think we'll be informing that, that answer. So if I could just, if this is an okay time to summarize what I'm, what I'm hearing, people support the roundtable format. That seems like kind of a no-brainer, getting good support for that. We had some mixed comments on the, whether the, you know, expedited process or the, the process that was laid out for the format and the framework, including, you know, providing the council thoughts in advance. There were sort of mixed opinions on that, but it sounded to me like the majority of you felt like that was actually helpful. And I think the chair made the point that if we adhere to that framework more fastidiously, we'll actually have more productive conversations potentially.
Point of clarity, if they're the only ones doing that part, then what's our role?
That, no, that's, that's a good, a good point. But I think that there, if the conversation were structured so that you had more discussion upfront, and I think this, this point, whether to maintain that framework as a recommendation, does hinge in part on some of what Commissioner Mayer was saying, that maybe taking the straw poll off, you know, as a recommendation, for them to take that out of what they're trying to accomplish with these, might, you know, resolve on, on what the format is. I can tell you from, you know, from staff's perspective, and I think, you know, the reason why we're recommending that they do continue to make some recommendations come out of these, these study sessions, is because we need to get clarity on what the draft documents are going to look like. If we're going to, you know, increase building height or decrease building height, that's going to have a big difference as to how, you know, what, how we draft the documents. And as we start to enter the, the environmental impact report phase, we need to be clear about that. And so getting, getting these issues resolved as opposed to, you know, expand getting these issues resolved as opposed to, you know, expanding the uncertainty, we need to, you know, continue to narrow the uncertainty and resolve those. So whether that happens in these meetings or whether that is, you know, a subsequent action that happens really rapidly after you've had that conversation, I think is an important piece. But, but that is something that you may want to clarify on a little bit. I'm, you know, I heard some support for the, and this was kind of in a couple of different contexts, but I think Commissioner Yodowicz said it first, making decisions, you know, based on fact. And I think that, you know, I heard Commissioner Mayor say, you know, that they may be looking at different kinds of facts, but many of you spoke to really having the Commissioner, the Council articulate their positions more clearly. And I think that the facilitator can help to, you know, get us to that point where, you know, if someone is, you know, putting forward a position, that facilitator, we can ask to help ensure that, you know, there's, there's, what's the backstory behind that decision? Where are you coming from? Does that make sense to folks? I heard that there was a desire to have more time for nuanced discussion. I think part of what we've discussed for, you know, with the Mayor and the Chair about this is to make sure that there is more sharing in the air, that the facilitator can help ensure that everybody's having a turn to, you know, participate. And I think that that, again, goes back to, you know, part of the structure and also having the facilitator there that helps to address that. Seeing nods there. And then to the, the comments around, oh, looking to the Commissioner's expertise, there were, that was discussed in many different ways, that, you know, you all have put in a lot of time, you were asked to put in the time, you put the time in. I think that segueing into, you know, what are our highest priority recommendations? You know, there was a lot going on in all of those meetings, but if you came up with a list of like, these are the topics we think we need to, you know, continue to discuss, and these are the, you know, what we would see as sort of like the highest priority recommendations that we don't want the Council to, you know, to, you know, to reduce or, you know, or diminish.
Should we, I mean, they're providing their points of view to us before the meeting. Should we provide a summary of our points of view to them?
Yeah, and you did mention writing a letter. I think that that's, you know, you know, something that we can consider if there are Commissioners. I mean, you acted as a body. I think, you know, it wasn't unanimous. Not all your decisions were unanimous. And I would say if forced to make a yay-nay decision, sometimes, you know, many of you were in the three to four range on, on the gradients of agreement. And so those decisions, if they were forced to a yay-nay decision, may have come out differently. We don't know. So I think having that, having, you know, you're going to have an opportunity in these meetings to be able to articulate, you know, your ideas behind why you voted the way that you did, to inform a more nuanced understanding of the decision that the Commission made. If you want to do that in writing, I think it's, you know, perfectly reasonable to do so. The idea of writing a letter to the Council, I think that, you know, that might be, two things on that. Number one, you would want that letter, it would be a, basically an action of the entire Commission. So you would have to go through and identify what those topics are. And you may be able to, instead of writing a letter, come up with the topics that are, these are the highest priorities. And basically, your recommendation is, don't diminish these factors, you know. But then as an individual Commissioner, you may want to provide more, more backstory as to why you voted the way that you did. And that will help bring out, I mean, I think we talked about sort of the Minority Report on some of the decisions that were made, you know, it gives voice to that Minority Report. Doesn't change your recommendation. Your recommendation, you know, stands, but it does give that more nuanced conversation.
Yeah, I don't, I don't want to take the time this evening to go back through this and once again identify the things that we feel like are most important, but I do think if everyone wanted to choose their top, I don't know, one, two, or three things that, that like, maybe it's building height and the associated density, like, this is the most important thing. Other things can change, flex, compromise, but this is the most important thing. If everyone wants to pick their things in that fashion, I don't know, David, what the best, whether we bring those to the next meeting and share them with the City Council in person, or send them into staff ahead of time so they can, the City Council has a chance to look at them and understand what our thinking is before that meeting. Go ahead, Dan.
I'm thinking about almost like public comment if we each, at some point at the beginning of this process with them, had our little moment on the mic to just say, this is how I am, where I'm at on the Gateway process and where, you know, this is the stuff that I are absolute on, and I don't know.
I think it would be more valuable if it were written down and published beforehand so they saw it and had a chance to think about it before the meeting, just like us getting their point of view.
And then in the meeting, you maybe can talk about, elaborate on why building height, or whatever it is was your most important thing. Does that, does anyone object to going that route? David, do you have a suggestion? Is this something that Commissioners could just email to you?
Yeah, I think-
I don't think it should go beyond three items. I don't know. I think top one, two, or three. And if you only have one, don't feel like you have to pick a couple other just to like meet your quota, you know. You know, like-
Yeah, I would say send them in priority order as well. Yeah, so I, you know, obviously this is the Council's meeting, need to confer with the Mayor and the City Manager on how they want to handle this, but I think that, you know, they will be able to get that information in some way, shape, or form. If you send it to me, I'll work with the, the City Manager and the Mayor to figure out, you know, how we bring that in to ensure that it's most effective. But I think these are really great recommendations.
I have a thing to add to your list.
You speaking?
I don't know why-
Mics don't work for me. There we go.
There you go.
I have a thing to add to your list, which is that everyone come prepared to the meeting. I think, you know, we want to make sure that everyone's like, reading all the documents prior to the meeting, watching all the great videos that the city is producing, you know, and is ready to discuss all the issues that we're planning to discuss at the meeting.
Go ahead, Abby.
Yeah, so something I didn't want us to skip over is that I noticed in our joint planning session that it was kind of unclear to Council members when they should be discussing an item. And I think that if, like, for example, there are times when, you know, before we'd even finished discussing or reaching a consensus on a topic, somebody has already gone on a tangent on what they think on the next topic, and it confuses us all, and we have to take a step back. So if maybe staff could interject and say, no, 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 that's coming up next, let's finish the discussion we're on, it would be a more directed conversation and focus. So that's, that's my request.
That's a great point, and I think we'll lean on Heather, the facilitator, to do that. Judith, go ahead.
Yeah, in preparing for this meeting, in response to the staff report, we were asked to actually identify priorities of substantive topics we'd like to identify for the next staff meeting. And I think most of us came here prepared to do that rather than just sending notes into David, and that may be something that we can do right now. And then supplement that with notes to staff after the meeting. Obviously, there are going to be things that we haven't thought of, and there are going to be, you know, reinforcements of, oh, wow, I didn't think of that. That, that actually, I think that's after hearing someone else speak. Yeah, that's, that's the priority. So I'd like to spend a few minutes doing that now.
Can I just jump in and say if we don't continue the topic of building height, it feels like everything else is subordinate to that?
Yeah, agreed. I, I hear what you're saying, Judith. I think, for me, we've just been through this so many times as a Commission, and we've shared our recommendation, that I just don't want us to beleaguer those decisions now. I think it's, I think we've, I think we've kind of been through it. I, I think it's efficient if we can submit a couple of our most important pieces to the City Council ahead of the next meeting, but I agree with you, Dan, that if building height isn't there, what are we doing? And the other, there's another side to that coin, which is that if you're not in support of density, then that means you either don't want the city to grow, or you don't acknowledge that it needs to grow, or you're in support of sprawl. But it's, you can't make a decision without, at least as a public official, addressing what the implications of that are. Go ahead, Matt.
So I think I just heard both of you say building height was like your most important thing. And I'd love to hear just like a couple words from each Commissioner, what is your most important thing? I think we can do that really quick.
Building density.
Yeah.
I would say height followed by density.
Judith?
I feel like the issue of bulkiness and design to achieve density is what we need to look at. Actually, and if I can just have a couple of comments here. After looking at the videos that David asked us to watch, thank you for making them, I became even more convinced that if we're going to be promoting high densities, it absolutely positively must be with design standards that reduce the feeling of too much bulk and structures that are simply too large. And so developing design standards to promote density with good, high-quality, livable, human-scale design is, to me, one issue, not separate issues.
Okay. Density with qualifications. Matt?
Mine is density.
Definitely build, building height in complete streets.
Okay.
May I just add something to that? It feels like the Gateway Pro entire project was based on if we want these other things, we have to go up to a certain height. Keeping in mind that I think the staff informed us that about 80% of the Gateway area is presently zoned for four stories. Is that roughly true? So if they already can build four stories, we could end up with a bunch of just cereal boxes kind of scattered around 80% of what we're trying to come up with a better model for. And, and in that, get a community benefits program that gives us the trails and, and, you know, Form-Based Code and a lot of stuff that we're all super excited about. But if we have to stop at four stories, then it diminishes the whole conversation really quickly. So it feels, that's why I say building height is my number one. If we can't resolve that with Council, then it's kind of a moot point. The rest of it-
Back to the drawing board.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think, I think, I hear alignment from the Planning Commission on that. So I appreciate that. I would like to move us on to the next part of our discussion about, actually, maybe we should take public comment now before we move on to, go ahead, Peter.
Can I just ask, when do you need these comments from us?
I would say that the, the latest would be the 20th, and sooner rather than later. So a week from tomorrow.
Week from tomorrow. Actually, I think we can discuss the general mixed and then take comment.
I would probably do that, yeah, unless you-
Can you, yeah, can you give us just a brief intro to the thought about looking at that general zoning change?
Yep. And I'll pull up the, the land use plan map, and I'll zoom out a little bit. The, so just, just to set the stage here, I'll go through, in super brief, the history of the proposed changes. The land use plan map provides the land use designations for each of the parcels within the City of Arcata, which establishes the use. We are updating the land use map that was adopted in 2000, amended several times, with the emphasis on, you know, these various infill opportunity zones that are highlighted in dark outlining here, as well as several rezones throughout the city, including, you know, rezoning the Commercial General and North Town to Commercial Mixed and so on and so forth. So that was the staff proposal. And you recall that we did a session at the Planning Commission about a month ago, a month and a half or so, when the Planning Commission looked at each of these rezones that were proposed by staff and made several recommended changes. We did that on a block-by-block basis. And so, for example, we had, you know, zoomed in on the Valley West. Originally, we had proposed to change the, the sections of Valley West Shopping Center and the portions that are currently zoned commercial visitor serving to Commercial General. The Planning Commission said, hey, let's do Commercial Mixed. So we went through group by group and did this exercise. As, at the staff level, after, after we received the updated map that you see here with the Planning Commission's recommendations, and this is what's been forwarded to the City Council for their recommendation, we realized that we have very few parcels left with the Commercial General designation. So there are some in the Zanzi project. There are, there's one on L.K. Wood, where Blondies is. And then there are a few in the Coastal Zone just south of Samoa. The rest of them, the Planning Commission made a recommendation to shift over to Commercial Mixed Use. We've also had several conversations about how, once we've done the land use designations, we need to then go back and update the zoning for Commercial Mixed Use in the Land Use Code to change those standards so that they function more in the way that we're intending them to function. For example, not requiring commercial on the ground floor in every case. And so a lot of emphasis was given towards trying to make these commercial areas that are not already in other designated areas more flexible, more able to pivot with the market, more able to provide more housing. As a result of those changes, leaving just these very few parcels as Commercial General, it sort of begs the question, do we need Commercial General? Maybe all of the parcels should be Commercial Mixed Use. And I think that's where we landed as staff recommendation, is to eliminate the Commercial General land use designation, make everything Commercial Mixed Use, and then take a look at the uses that are allowed in Commercial General that would, that are not currently allowed in Commercial Mixed Use, and maybe set up some, some special, you know, you know, use permit requirements or geographic requirements that those use types would have so that they can still fit within the mix in our city, but that aren't pervasive throughout the entire, you know, Commercial land use designation. A good example of that is, you know, you know, RV sites right now, you know, you can do those in Commercial General, but Commercial Mixed Use you cannot. And so that table is-
Did you say RV?
Yeah, so Travel Trailer Park, RV Park, for example, is allowed in the Commercial General. If you look on packet page 11, it shows the table of land uses, land use classifications, and shows you the differences between those different designations. If we eliminate Commercial General and don't take care of the land uses, you wouldn't be able to have an RV park in our city anymore. And I think we've been talking about, in particular in the Coastal Zone, where, you know, we might want to encourage investment in things like RV parks that are less infrastructure, not permanent housing for people. So this is one of our sea-level rise adaptation strategies, is to encourage those kinds of uses. So we'd have to get into a lot more nuanced conversation than we're going to be able to have tonight. But if we can, if we can get a recommendation from the Planning Commission as to what direction to pivot to tonight, then staff can come back with a little bit more fleshed-out conversation around where to go. The alternative would be to, you know, turn back the dial on some of these properties and add more Commercial General properties to the mix. You know, if there are particular areas where, you know, Commercial General is, you know, you know, more desirable, maybe Commercial General in the Valley West Shopping Center, for example. Commercial General and Commercial Mixed Use both allow for housing to be developed on those sites. They have different standards for the mix of commercial and housing in each of these different sites. So that's, again, something that's more nuanced you can get into. But we had- But we had, you know, you know, basically the Commercial Central, Commercial General, Commercial Mixed Use, and then Commercial Visitor Serving. So we had four different commercial types in the city. I think that simplifying those, reducing them to, you know, one or two types makes sense. It makes sense to me that we have a, you know, special commercial district around the downtown area, the Central Commercial, and that we have one, one additional one in the Commercial Mixed Use. So a lot of the rest of the staff report is related to background on the types of policy changes that would need to happen. We don't need to dig into those at this point. I just want to get a sense for where the planning commission feels like we ought to go with that main topic.
Thanks for that. Just to clarify, the process moving forward, if we were to agree to make a recommendation to eliminate the Commercial General and focus on Commercial Mixed, what would the process be whereby staff would bring the specifics, the sort of granular details of how that would play back to the commission?
Yeah, I think at your next meeting, we would bring this topic back with the recommended changes to the land use table that you see, the table in your staff report table LU3, and then, you know, the revised map showing those, those areas where you've re-designated them.
Okay. Second question. Isn't, isn't, is it not accurate to say that the Commercial Mixed designation is more aligned with the city's goal for housing creation than Commercial General? And that there's benefits there?
I think in particular with the changes to the zoning that we've discussed in, you know, in the process of updating the general plan, the clear answer would be yes. Commercial Mixed Use, Commercial Central there, or Commercial General, rather, there's, I think, actually higher density standards available in Commercial General than Commercial Mixed Use. But we will have, you know, with the, you know, with the updated changes, we're already proposing to have 50 units per acre for each zoning type. It just sort of begs the question, why do we have these differences when we only have a few Commercial General parcels left over? And I think that, you know, the idea, in part, you know, it's, you know, it's named more appropriately. If what we're really trying to get is a mix of uses, Commercial Mixed Use conveys that. Commercial General does not.
Does anyone have any questions, David? I mean, Dan, sorry.
Yeah, I'm just wondering if you're just asking if we roughly agree, and if we do, therefore you'll forward this to staff to rewrite something to bring back to us? Is that...
Yeah, exactly, yeah. Which direction do you want us to go? Do you want us to pull back more Commercial General? Do you want to eliminate Commercial General and make it all Mixed Use? Or do you want to just leave it the way it is, recognizing there's only now a handful of parcels that are Commercial General?
Abby, go ahead.
I worked for the County of Humboldt for a long time and trying to explain to whether it's a member of the community or a realtor the different land use designations. I am so supportive of fewer land use designations, especially if we, or if the City of Arcata already has a similar land use designation. Looking at this chart, it looks like many of the, I guess, principally permitted uses already correlate with that land use designation. So I personally would be supportive of combining those designations.
Thank you for that. Judith?
Yeah, I agree. Simplifying the land use code a little bit is a good idea, but since you asked us for input with some specific examples, I have some specific suggestions. And perhaps you can put them in the hopper when you come back with some, some of your revisions. First is, I, yeah, I think, I think that eliminating the Commercial General is a good idea, but we should absolutely not simply roll those over into Commercial Mixed. In particular, we have sites in the coastal zone south of Samoa, which I believe should not have additional housing. And we have other sites that have infrastructure constraints. We need to recognize that even though the zoning might say 50 units of housing per acre are allowed, we may in fact be getting 90, and those will put additional demands not only on the site, but on the infrastructure, as well as on the commercial establishments that will then be potentially battling with residents for things like parking. And, and so I'd really like to see a parcel-by-parcel assessment of any rezoning rather than, you know, a, a, a simple rollover into a Commercial Mixed Zone.
I think, I think we, we know we're going to get that and a, and a chance to look through that again.
Yeah, and, and I really appreciate, you know, your, your suggestion that some of those may actually require use permits, which would then provide an opportunity to figure out what, what those impacts and demands would be, so.
Thanks, Judith. Matt?
I'm in favor.
Thank you for that concise answer. Joel?
Yeah, I, I agree. Simpler is better.
I'm in favor. Strongly in favor as well, yes.
Eliminate Commercial General and bring us back more specifics to review at our next meeting.
Okay, noted.
Okay. I appreciate everyone's work tonight. I appreciate the thoughtful comments. I just want to say I'm really looking forward to our next joint study session. I think the last one was informative, maybe not in the ways that we maybe would have guessed, but I, I think we know more. And I think it's going to lead to a really great meeting next time, so I appreciate everyone's input about how that could work better. Appreciate everyone's work. Next, we will have public comment. Each speaker this evening will have three minutes. Feel free to state your name for the record. May we have the first speaker, please?
Gary, I did take planning classes at UC Davis, and there was a lot I learned in those classes about urban planning and such. And I've also had lived experiences in urban areas, a little bit in New York City. And I just want to share my frustration with ongoing narrative that's being put out by some county, commission members that there's people around the community who want sprawl and are not in favor of infill. And I know no one, I know no one in this community that I've talked to about this planning project that wants sprawl and wants to spread out into the agriculture. And I sort of resent the narrative that's being told here in this room tonight that there are those of us who, we don't want infill, we don't want density, and we want sprawl. And I just, this organization way back in January of 2022, Rocker, of which a commission member is a member, came out with a letter basically suggesting that that's what members of the community wanted. And I really object to that narrative. So please, please understand that everybody I know in the City of Arcata who cares about this community is not interested in sprawl.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your comments.
I wanted to give you feedback from the study session, the key word study session. It really felt from the public standpoint, it was a tac session on Kimberly. So the ones of you that are involved with that, you really owe her apology. And I would also like to point out that defend your position, because that's what you seem to be addressing to her, understanding her position and defend your position. Because for a year and a half, I have sent you quite a bit of information and been very vocal, how about sea level rise? When have we ever really had a conversation about that other than when we had the experts? And that was only because the public put a lot of pressure with a lot of writing, a lot of speeching about that. Have we ever had a discussion about that too much since then? I don't, I don't recall. I've been to a lot of meetings. So, yeah, defend that position. And why should you defend that position? Because with quite a bit of this seven-stories buildings, it isn't about four stories, five stories, three. That has, has nothing to do with it. It has to do with the location. It's in the coastal zone, which you're going to have to go to the Coastal Commission for this. And I, I'm just giving you a heads up. I don't think they're going to go for this, but that's my opinion. But when have you reached out? Here we go. We have a local coastal member here. She's new on the scene, but I've been saying this for a year and a half. Reach out to their department. It's only five minutes a walk away. Why haven't you done that? You know, I've talked, I don't know how many times I brought that up. And you know what? I checked on you guys. Didn't seem like you were reaching out. I'll just put it that way. How about the standpoint that we had the fire district here in January? And basically, they had quite a bit of research there, and they stated, we don't feel comfortable over three stories because here, here are the reasons. We can't support it. If you guys can get it together, you know, then we can, then we can do that. It's just like you, like, not even paying attention to it. You're just telling us, oh, yes, we're having meetings, blah, blah, blah. But, I mean, you're just pursuing this like all of these things don't need to be addressed. And you're, you're attacking the one person that just had a question about, well, five, six stories. I mean, and the interesting thing is that you're upset that you feel like the, the city council is not listening to you. What? Well, that's exactly how we feel about you. It's like we've written you. It's like, what, one single item that we've talked about, have you changed your position? Your position has always been basically seven, eight stories. And where did you even get that from? It's like, that was August 23rd. We haven't even had the environmental impact report. Two weeks before that, you had the fire department said, please, don't even vote on it. And it wasn't until January that they came out, and that was because you kept on putting off on this. So defend your position, because you're really acting very arrogant right now that you think this is the way to go, and there's a lot more to it than this. Thank you.
Thanks for your comments, Gregory.
James Becker. Hello to staff and commissioners. The last study session was a bit chaotic, but it was a good starting point. Council's, I should say, city council did look for guide, further guidance on massing and inclusionary zoning. It was unfortunate the commissioners were not underutilized in this process. But I do believe study sessions are for the purpose of hashing out questions and disagreements. Hopefully, the next meeting will strike a balance. On that note, I wish you all the best as you continue to work through the policies and prescriptions that you weigh in on the concerns of the entire community in the hope of providing a framework for more housing and possibly more affordable housing scaled throughout the income levels. Building massing will continue to be a contentious issue. Please consider GA policies GA 9P and GA 9Q. These policies were prescribed in the original 2021 draft, draft release and are still in the third rendition below Gateway Area Plan Draft 7/11/23 Clean Draft Vulcan Masking Page 103. GA 9P, Human Scale Massing, Provide for Human Scale and Pedestrian Friendly Building Massing, Where Large Buildings Are Broken into Smaller Volumes Can Fit into Surrounding Neighborhoods. GA 9Q, Transition to Lower Intensity Uses, Require Buildings to Incorporate Massing Strategies to Minimize Impacts on Adjacent Single Family Homes. I Believe It's Possible to Meet Future Housing Needs and Still Scale to Existing Neighborhoods. Frontages in the Form of Required or Publicly Owned Private Spaces Can Serve for Common Spaces for the Public Round. These frontages offer the unstated neighborhood benefit of setbacks in relation to existing neighborhoods. A lot size, if a lot size is sufficient, structures can reach their desired mass and still coexist with existing neighborhoods. The Trending Merit of Unbuilding Massing has framed citing setbacks and stepbacks as all or nothing. The planning commission, you've, you've basically discounting the past, and it was, I understand it's because of the fear that you're going to end up with bonus densities. I believe there's a little room in between there. Please consider the original spirit of policies GA 9P and GA 9Q as you move forward with refinement on the Gateway Draft Area Plan. I believe these policies can bridge divide between much-needed housing and existing neighborhood concerns related to where they will be incorporated. Your time and energy is appreciated. Thank you.
Thanks for your comments, James.
Thank you. I'm Fred Wise. I'm going to be brief and skip around a little bit. First, in the Density Bonus Law and Inclusionary Zoning 15-minute video, which is good, I'm sure you've watched it. It concludes, our design standards and community benefits programs are unlikely to be implemented due to waivers and concessions. I would think you'd like to set a schedule, a meeting to discuss this, because this is crucial, as we know. I think the Gateway Code and Community Benefit Program can be made more attractive to developers so that they choose what you've decided. The Study Session Roundtable, I heartily agree. I was against the format as it was shown. Does this, the question I have is, does this mean that it will not be recorded or not be on Zoom? At the August 2022 study session, I did audio recordings on arcata1.com. There's been 520 views or listens to that study session. We can have a rough video of this made at a cost of $200, or I'll do the audio recording and put it on Arcata One. On arcata1.com, there's an article called "Four Decision-Making Styles," I found on the web. I found this very helpful in understanding people's decision-making styles. It has a matrix and continuum from more structured to more ambiguity, from more technical to more social-oriented. I'll say it again, I found it very useful in understanding how people make decisions. You've learned a lot from this first study session. I would say, schedule some more. This one didn't work so well. Worked in some ways, didn't work in other ways, okay? Schedule another one, just for Gateway, or two more. Not, not for the general plan, just for Gateway. I have an article called "Visualizing Density" on arcata1.com. I say, don't confuse height with density. I, I'm not for three-story buildings, just to be clear on that. I'd rather have fewer number of taller buildings. On that article, there's a 205 units per acre, four stories. There's a 100-unit acre, that's four stories. In Mad River Union last week, there was a seven-story building that didn't have any step backs, but it was only a third of a block wide, so it didn't have the massing. Well, let's see. I've got more, but I can put it in writing and send it in a letter. The, in terms of, Joel, thank you for your, excuse me, Commissioner Yodovis, thank you for that article. I will put it on Arcata One. If we want facts, please contact me. You know I have strong opinions, but I also like facts. And I will gladly put that and promote it to people who you think may not be listening. Thanks.
Thanks, Fred. Appreciate your comments. Appreciate everyone's comments and thoughts and civic engagement. Do we have anyone on Zoom?
We do. Of course, I'm using a mouse that's not connected to that computer. Go ahead, Jane.
Good evening. Unfortunately, of course, I missed the first 25 minutes, so I didn't get to comment at the intro. So I'd appreciate if you'd accommodate an additional minute at least. at least. Regarding the community meeting that's going to occur, I understand. I hope you are prepared to give appropriate notice so we can get people's opinions and I hope the changes in the couple will be reflected in that plan that's presented to the community at that time. We haven't had a committee meeting like that since, what, January, after this plan came out, the Gateway Plan. And I think I want to make a comment about the relative attack mode everybody's gone into at, after Kimberly for raising the issues that many of us are concerned about. In other words, many of us are concerned about high-density and high multi-story buildings in the coastal zone, subject to sea level rise. Many of us are concerned about the fact that, I'm sorry. I got a telephone call. Sorry. Just took it off the book. Many of us are concerned about the fact that it's going to be at least one and a half, maybe two years before they have a proof-of-service agreement for handling anything over what they consider they can handle over three stories. We already have over four stories or at least four stories. So I think she's reflecting concerns of the fire district. She's reflecting concerns of the community about maybe not liking, yes, we all know we need more building and more housing, but we also need to have, we need to take the interests of the community in mind. And that was reflected in that initial January meeting when I guess 180 out of 200 or whatever attendees said, "We don't want anything over three or four stories." Now, I think the fact that you've tied your amenities to building height is perhaps an error and perhaps it should be tied instead to density and not just building height. And you might want to look at that possibility because that might be way more important. I realize that part of the, good part about building height is you don't use up as much land, but we're not talking about a paucity of land. We have land in that district. We have 138 acres. So I think that needs to be looked at, but I think you need to give, rather than being in attack mode, poor Kimberly, give her an opportunity.
Thank you for your comments, Jane. Thank you for your comments.
Thank you very much.
Go ahead, Patricia.
Yeah. Good evening, commissioners. I just, I really appreciate Joanne bringing up the, bringing up the fact that a lot of us have been put in a category of not wanting infill. I was actually personally very excited about having infill come into Arcata until I realized just how much it could affect certain areas. There's over 170 single-family homes within the Gateway Area and/or small apartments. And so I think what really, it's not an all or nothing. It shouldn't be all or nothing. You're either all in for it or, I think there's room to work with the community and actually fine-tune it. I personally believe that there's places for larger buildings, but there's, you know, there's sightings and setbacks and just the massing should really be considered a little bit more. I think the community concerns aren't being reflected in this plan. Their concerns about the infrastructure and the fire districts are just a couple of examples. I think we really need to sit down and have solutions to those before we push forward because I think it's really putting us all in a really dangerous position. I think we should also be trying to have a creative conversation of how to find creative ways to fit infill in throughout all of Arcata. I know you're talking about upzoning some things, but there's other ways that we can really push forward. Ventura, the city of Ventura actually is considering lowering their height limit in the working class and the industrial neighborhood, which is along the Avenue in Ventura. They're lowering their height limit two full stories in that because equity, basically equity concerns. So I think there's a way that we can fit in infill and not have citizens feel like they're being continuously attacked. I actually have started a journal of all the ways that I've been kind of personally attacked and it's kind of unfortunate. We just really want to make this plan a great plan for Arcata and have it so everybody is proud of it and not just the top people that are in power. We really want to, yeah, keep the character of Arcata and really help it grow well without stretch marks because we know stretch marks are not the most glorious thing or at least us women do. So anyways, yeah, if we could move forward with really allowing the public to come forward, the community to come forward and give their input, that would be great instead of just putting us in a nothing category. Thank you.
Thanks for your comments, Patricia. David?
We have no other commenters online, but I did forget to bring up one other recommendation that came from a couple of landowners. If you'll indulge me two minutes to explain it, I'll bring it back the next time we talk about land use changes.
Go ahead.
And if I, you know, I'll explain it quickly and then if I can get, you know, like a yes, no from the commission, that'd be great. So we've, this is the existing land use map that you see on the screen here. The proposed land use map has the bulk of properties along Spear going to residential medium density. These going to commercial mixed. There's a lot of commercial, I'm sorry, residential low density in this area. And there are a couple of parcels in that mix of residential low density that are residential very low density. You see them here in the existing land use map. We've got a request of these parcel owners to rezone them to residential low as the rest of the parcels are around them. And so, you know, I'd like to bring that back with a more formal discussion about the, you know, the rationale for that. From my perspective, it does make sense to upzone these to at least residential low density. They do abut the agricultural zoning in the rear here. And in many areas, you'll see residential low, very low density in areas where we're trying to downzone before you enter, you know, public lands or, you know, forest lands or other agricultural lands. But, and that was sort of the intent with these properties here off of Spear that are in the coastal zone. The planning commission has already made the recommendation to upzone all of these to residential medium and this seems in parity with that decision to upzone these to at least residential low density.
This is just a question. It came out with the upzoning on the other side of Spear as well. And of course, there's this issue of the landlocked parcels. In other words, parcels where there's no public road that reaches them. And I'm just curious if that upzoning includes requirements to detail the actual access that would be provided to those parcels.
Yeah, that's a really good question. There's an easement to these parcels and we'd have to get into, you know, specifics around whether that easement would convey to additional parcels if they subdivided. But clearly, they could not subdivide further and also not provide some form of, you know, more formalized access to those other parcels. So that is a concern and a consideration. I don't think in the rezone necessarily it is, but certainly at the subdivision state it would, stage it would be.
Just following up. I'm wondering if staff is going to be working on this. If you could also come up with some policy language that would address these issues of easement access. And of course, this also involves things like sewer connections that would have to cross someone else's property and presumably merge with someone else's sewer lateral.
Yeah, I can bring back, we have existing policy and regulation that would regulate that in the case of a subdivision. So I'll bring that at the same time.
You'll bring it back for a more detailed discussion. Okay, great. Well, given that, I would like to thank everyone for their work this evening. Appreciate everyone's input throughout our discussions. I want to move now on to correspondence and communications and just check to see, do we have any correspondence from any planning commission members this evening? Dan?
I noticed that Commissioner Lehman and Simmons are both going to be out for the October study session and I'm just wondering if everybody will be here for the next one, for the September study session.
Everyone planning to attend the next joint study? Okay. Any other communications from planning commission members? David, any planning communications from staff, correspondence rather?
Yeah, yeah, three things, well, two things and then a question to the chair. So one, I just wanted to reiterate, the City Council and Planning Commission will be holding a study session on September 26th at 6:00 PM in these council chambers to discuss the topics that you've discussed tonight and to continue their discussion on gateway plans. So hope to see people out for that. And if you can't make it out, please, you know, send your comments in via email and also just to let people know that the mayor is working on a plan to ensure that folks who are only able to zoom in do have access to make comments. And then the second piece that I wanted to let folks know about is that we have scheduled an open house to provide information on the gateway code and another forum for folks to, you know, provide their thoughts on that code for September 25th. It's the day before, the Monday before the joint study session on the 26th. That'll be held at the D Street Neighborhood Center. Want to acknowledge that there was potentially some confusion on a flyer that we sent out where we said D Street Community Center. That's the old name for it. It's the D Street Neighborhood Center. So don't go to the community center off of Martin Luther King Jr. Way. Come to the D Street Neighborhood Center on D Street. That'll be on Monday, the 25th from 4:00 to 6:00. And then I just wanted to throw this out. I know that we had some technical issues before. We had one commenter mention that they wanted to make comments on things that weren't on the agenda. If the chair was open to the suggestion, the commission wants to, you can do an agenda modification to reopen, public comment to allow those commenters their three minutes at your discretion.
How many commenters do we have who wanted to speak?
We have a maximum of two and we have one, we have two.
Then let's go ahead and reopen.
Okay, so that would...
Question about the...
Your mic.
Can we ask a question about the September 25th meeting first?
Sure.
In some of our, of the past informational meetings, you've actually asked commissioners not to attend because of Brown Act things. Is this going to be agendized as a meeting so that we will be able to attend it or not?
It is not agendized as a meeting. It's a open, public forum. The recommendation of staff is that commissioners don't attend these so that there's not an appearance or an, in fact, Brown Act violation. There's also, it's a little bit awkward if you happen to be at a meeting and you're participating in a recommendation that's coming to your body. So there's that to consider. But it is, there's no strict prohibition. If commissioners or council members wish to attend, it's up to them if they decide to do that. But the staff recommendation, to be clear, is that you don't attend, that you let the public have that forum and that we will bring those recommendations forward. At this particular meeting, one of the things that we're going to have is a comment box so that folks can, you know, write their comments down on a piece of paper, drop it in the box. We're going to scan all that information in so that the decision-makers can read verbatim what people have said at that meeting. And so you'll be getting that input.
Okay, so reopen. Is there a specific protocol we need to go through?
Yeah, so just quickly, a motion to reopen oral communications, second voice vote.
Motion to reopen oral communications.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. So let's reopen and this is to reopen the initial comment period for items not on our agenda for those who were on Zoom and unable to have their public comment. Fire away.
Go ahead, Jane.
Hi, thank you. I did want to articulate that I think it's very important that you have good public communication of the existence of this meeting and I wonder how that's going to happen. Not just on email, but is there a way to make sure that it gets in the paper, that it gets in the Mad River Union and that gets done right away? People understand that they don't have to be there from 4:00 to 6:00, that they can come, drop in and give their comments in on notes and leave them there. And I'm glad that you plan to scan all those comments and make them available unlike what happened in that first January town hall where we all, where one of our group fortunately took the time to compile all that for you. It would have been really helpful. This is a good improvement. So I just want to make sure there's enough publication of this meeting so you get a wide variety of people. And I'd be very interested in understanding a little bit more about exactly what you plan to do, how you plan to conduct that. Are you going to have poster boards? Are you going to have people sitting there? And I think, I think actually it would be really good if members of the City Council and Planning Commission could come because they don't have to talk to each other, but they could certainly have an active conversations with individual members of the public. And that is generally impossible to have because we can't do that at these meetings. So I don't think you should be discouraged from being at those meetings. It's not, it's not that you're sitting and talking together. It's that you're talking to the public. That's the whole purpose and they would love to have access to you all and understand your point of view because we don't know how much we'll have that opportunity in the context of the joint session, study session. Historically, study sessions, members of the public could actually sit in that circular round table, not at the table. We put the chairs all the way around the whole section instead of lined up in rows where the public was one place and council members were another. There was one great big circle, maybe too thick, but basically allowed everyone to participate. So if you really want to have discussion, you have to allow the public to participate as well. And it needs to be a discussion, Q and A. Let's, and let's have it operate that way, not as a decision-making. We want to listen to each other. We want to learn from each other. We want to find out what each other really thinks and why.
Thank you, Jane. Thank you for your comments.
Go ahead, Patricia.
Yes, I'll be quick on this one. I know I've had a lot of people approach me and wonder why the D Street Neighborhood Meeting is on a Monday from 4:00 to 6:00. I know in the past, it's been, you've wanted to reach out with more other people that have families or are working and it really cuts, it really cuts into people's work time. I don't know if people would actually be able to come. So people have been asking why we aren't adding a Sunday or a Saturday to that. I'm not sure if it's still possible to do such, but for the Form Based Code, it's kind of a lengthy, in-depth conversation and it would be nice if more of the community could actually come. That said, I think this also shouldn't replace an actual in-person open house at the other community center again, as we did earlier on. It was right during COVID and, or just opening up from COVID. And so people were very hesitant to come on that one and not a lot of people knew about the Gateway Plan at that time. So I think the call to have another open house would be great because people look for me to explain the Gateway Area Plan and it is very, it is a very difficult and very in-depth description that you have to go through. So if we could also do an open house there at the larger community center, that would be great. Yes. So I just wanted to throw that out. If we could throw in an actual weekend for the people that work, that would be great. So you don't get just all of us older, white property owners, as was stated before at a meeting. So thank you very much.
Thanks for your comments, Patricia. Anyone else on Zoom that missed out?
That's all.
Okay, then that does bring us to the end of our meeting and there being no further business, this meeting is now adjourned. business, this meeting is now adjourned.